Good afternoon, everyone. Noting it is 1:26. This is the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee number eight, 2021. I note that all councillors are in attendance, yes. We don't have any apologies. Does anybody have any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda today that they need to declare? No? Okay, we have no business outstanding. So we will move to item number one, which is the confirmation of minutes of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee number seven of 2021, of the 5th of August. I will move that. Could I have a second? I thank you, councillor Milligan. Does anyone have any discussion around those minutes? No? We'll put that matter to the vote. All those in favour? Confirmed that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to item number two. Officers' report, the Ipswich Central Revitalisation Community Engagement Report. It's the report that summarises the engagement undertaken for the Ipswich Central revitalisation. And the recommendation is that the Ipswich Central Revitalisation Community Engagement Report be received and the contents noted. Could I have the relevant council officer come forward, please? Thank you.
Erin Marchant, project manager for Ipswich Central.
Thank you, Ms Marchant. Could you just give us an update, please, around how the project has been going, particularly after the feedback during Spark?
Yeah, so we undertook six community engagement sessions, face-to-face, plus online engagement through the process. We did trade door knocks and also communicated with our industry partners, like our chambers of commerce. So through all of the engagement that we have done to date, we've had very positive sentiment. The information we gathered at those engagements, we ended up taking and we have created a draft positioning framework for Ipswich Central. This framework is something that we are very proud of and we are going to be going out to community consultation on the framework itself. That will be happening shortly.
Thank you, Ms Marchant. I was delighted to meet with you recently and after reading this report outlining all of the amazing feedback and ideas that came out of those community engagement opportunities. And, you know, a lot of the ideas, not a lot, some of the ideas aren't new. They've been floating around for a while within the community. So the draft positioning framework, I'm just delighted that we're finally bringing it all together in one neat tidy bundle and that will, you know, give us the direction going forward and then hopefully put some governance around it so we can start achieving and ticking off some of these items. So thank you, it was great work. Does anybody else have any questions for Ms Marchant? Thank you, ma'am.
That's okay. Thank you very much, Ms Marchant, and I appreciate when you were doing a lot of this consultation, I was getting texts and pictures of what was happening in the community on Bradfield Bridge and even at the showground markets on a Sunday, early Sunday morning and things like that. So thank you very much for making sure that we captured a wide variety of things. And I guess looking at the, I guess, I'm looking at page, what, 22 of 96? And also 23, looking at the top 10 results, was there anything out there that surprised you or stood out from that?
Nothing that surprised me considerably, given the involvement in the project and the engagement we had done prior. But it just reiterated that we are on the right track and these are still the priorities for the community moving forward.
And on page 23, there was the Car Spears Swap and Sell Festival. Which I know didn't make the top 10, which I was a bit surprised at. What was the feedback about that?
We have actually had some further feedback from our trader group that we've been working with and it has come up on their list. So it is something we are putting into the list of activities and activations that we do want to look at moving forward. So we'll see what momentum that gets and then we'll be able to move forward with those.
Thank you.
No further questions? Thank you, Ms Marchant. I will move the officers' report. Could I have a second, please? Thank you, Mayor Harding. Now open up for discussion. Does anyone have any comments?
If I may, Chair, I'll just reiterate again what this, the car swaps, spears and sell. The feedback I get consistently from the top-of-town traders is for honk or, you know, they're those type of things that we've had in the past. So I'd love to see if, to make sure that's wrapped up in whether it is going forward as well. And I think this has been great. We've done a lot of work on Nicholas Street Precinct and it was the traders in our Ipswich Central core that have said to us, hey, what can you do for us? So it's been great to see this open up and look at it more strategically for the whole CBD.
Absolutely, and I support your comments, ma'am, that it's important that it's not just Nicholas Street precinct-focused, that we support the wider precincts all throughout our CBD. We might put, if there's no further discussion, we'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour? Confirmed that's unanimous and carried. Now moving on to item number three, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct Communications Engagement and Events Report for August 2021. The recommendation that the report be received and the contents noted. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? No? Okay. Could I have a mover, please, for this? Thank you, councillor Milligan, and a second, though. Thank you, councillor Kunselman. I'll now open up for discussion. Does anyone have any comments? Thank you, ma'am.
If I may, Chair, it's great to see, and I guess I can't help but promote the upcoming events that are in the report here. So this Friday night, I don't want to steal your thunder, Chair, maybe you're going to speak to the upcoming events? But just great to see the Ipswich Highlight Markets will start this Friday at Toulma Place. But if you're a dad and you've got a beard or a motorbike, I think you have to be at Toulma Place on Sunday for Father's Day. There's bikes, beards and barbecue as part of our Galvanise Festival. Also, the Historical Motorcycle Club of Queensland are celebrating their 50th anniversary and they're doing it here in Ipswich as well. So I think there's beard judging, all sorts of great fun activities, as well as in the September school holidays, there's going to be a Nerf Battle Zone and meet and greets with my Iron Man and Spider-Man. So I think it's really great to see the activation in that area and seeing the residents enjoy it.
Thank you, ma'am, and I commend the communications and events team down within the Nicholas Street precinct. They do a great job in activating the space and I encourage all members of the Ipswich community to head to the website, the Nicholas Street Precinct website. It's regularly updated with all the events that are coming up and there's always something on. And the bonus is, a lot of it is free for our local families. We might put the matter to the vote then, if there's no further comments? All those in favour? Confirmed that's unanimous and carried. Now moving on to item four, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct Retail Subcommittee, sorry, Retail Subprojects Steering Committee Report for August 2021. And the recommendation is that the report be received and the contents noted. Could I ask the relevant council officer to come forward, please? Just state your name and title, please.
James Hepburn, and I'm the chair of the Retail Subprojects Steering Group.
Thank you, Mr Hepburn. I was wondering if you can give us an update on the cinema deal?
Of course. And there's not a huge amount we can actually talk about due to confidentiality reasons from when we reported last month. Just to perhaps build on that slightly, and we have a number of cinema operators entered the expression of interest stage, some nearly four, five months ago now. And that has been taken through now to the next stage of the procurement process where we're actively looking at these operators and the types of offers that they've put forwards. They range certainly from management agreements to leases, which is what the OI have requested. And we're working quite closely with KPMG now to assess the financial viability between both those offers and the knock-on effect to the design of the current venue building that we have a DA approval for from a number of years ago.
Noting that we are still in the midst of COVID and the enormous effects it's having on retail and entertainment industries, are you, are we getting a better handle on perhaps where the market is sitting from a cinema point of view around Australia? Have we got any examples of moving back to the traditional model pre-COVID?
I think we can call on, a report we can't make public right now, but we can call on some research that we've done with a research house that are looking at a significant demand for a cinema offer within Ipswich and within this region. And so we feel quite comfortable that the product that we produce will have enough to keep it certainly viable and support the rest of the precinct, which is its main role as the anchor tenant. And I think generally speaking, for the cinema industry, it's hard to tell in Australia. I think I've seen some green shoots only recently this morning whereby 007 is going to be released on the 11th of November. That's a worldwide release, so that really will play out in Europe and Northern America where obviously their vaccination rates are far higher than here. It'll be very interesting to watch the numbers of cinema attendees in Queensland, bearing in mind that New South Wales and Victoria are obviously going to be quite constrained in that space. So it's very much a watching brief on that. But I think in a post-COVID world, we certainly feel quite comfortable that there is certainly a great space for a new cinema in the city centre.
Thank you. Look forward to receiving that due diligence going forward when it's certainly an appropriate time for it to be shared. And acknowledge that, yes, we're a little bit behind here in Australia, I guess, in our recovery and vaccination rates. So a good point to be looking for direction from, I guess, the UK and the US, how they're recovering, these industries are recovering. So thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I have somebody move? Thank you, Mayor Harding, and I will second that one. Now open up for discussion. Does anyone have any comments? No? We might put the matter to the vote then. All those in favour? Noting that's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Now move on to item number five, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct Approval of an Agreement for Lease for Eats Tenancy T1. Noting that this matter contains commercial and confidence issues, we will be moving in to closed session. So for the purposes of viewers that may watch this back, that is the reason why we're moving into closed session. So... In accordance with section 254-J, 3-E, G, I and C of the Local Government Regulation 2012, I move that we go into closed session to discuss the terms of the lease for the Eats Tenancy T1. Could I have a, I'll move that. Could I have a second, though? Thank you. Okay, sorry. Thank you, Mayor Harding. Put it to the vote? Okay, thank you. Notice that's unanimous and carried?
All those in favour, noting that's unanimous. And we will wait for...
Vicky, Vicky can do it.
Staff?
We're in open.
Okay.
It's recording.
Okay, so should we wait for the staff to return now that we're in open session? No. Okay. Okay, so we've just come out of closed session where we were discussing an agreement for lease for council's consideration associated with tenancy T1 within the Nicholas Street precinct, its building. The contents of that arrangement are commercial in confidence. During our closed session, we were also discussing, I guess, the governance and procedures going forward as more and more of these leases come to us for approval and ready for execution. And I guess the commercial world and things need to be done in a timely fashion and certainly legal contracts time is of the essence. So we were just talking through how that happens in, within the local government framework. So I think there'll be some further work done by council officers behind the scenes to work out what those procedures are and certainly will share the process with the public in due course. Okay, so the recommendation that council entwined to the agreement for lease and the incentive deed with the proposed lessy for tenancy T1. Can I have a mover please for the recommendations? Thank you, councillor Coonsworthy. And a seconder?
Thank you, Mayor Harding.
Is there any discussion?
My only discussion would be just, just because we're not live streaming, because we had a technical issue, it's recorded, that we did close at 1:41pm and we came back at 2:19pm, just for the sake of the record.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no discussion, we'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour, noting that's unanimous and carried. We have nil notices of motion. We do have matters arising and that's a confidential discussion in relation to the terms of reference and the survey results for our individual committees. So we will need to move into closed session? No? Okay. It's after the conclusion of the meeting? Perfect. Okay, so no other formal matters? I will close the meeting at 2:23? 2:22pm, thank you.